We're good.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to our city council meeting for Wednesday, May 28th. We're going to get started tonight with a pledge of allegiance by Hunter Opikins.
Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hunter. We'll move to item 4.2, City Council Comments and Recognitions. Anything from the council tonight?
Yeah, I just want to say, not only me, but almost every citizen I spoke to on Monday was extremely pleased with the maintenance of the cemetery and how it looked as the presentation. And staff did a wonderful job on that. So I know that some staff members stepped up as others were sick or absent. So that was very, very awesome. So, thanks for that.
Same, just to tag on to that, thanks to the fire department, the youth council staff, everybody who helped at the breakfast. It's always such, it's just a great event for our community. I think over 500 plates, right, at the breakfast. So it's really fun to bring people together. And thanks to Teddy for his great presentation there also.
I will note tonight, the councilman Henderson is excused tonight. He is celebrating a birthday for his wife tonight. We'd like to welcome council member Anderson. This is her first meeting with us. Tara Anderson was appointed two weeks ago, 13 days ago, to be on the council. Will fill out the rest of the, fill out the rest of this year, her term will. But welcome, council member Anderson. We appreciate your willingness to serve. We look forward to serving with you. Just a quick, I will say, it's not a city related, but hats off to the Harriman rugby team, the Harriman High Rugby Team, who took second, lost the heartbreaker in the finals back in South Bend, Indiana, in their rugby national tournaments, where they finished runners-up for, at the national level. So hats off to them. I know they're disappointed to not come home with the trophy, but still an amazing season for them. And look, maybe recognize them in the future as well, something, so. Okay, anything Tara? You're good? Okay. Okay, at this point, we will go to public comments. At this point, audience members may bring any item within the city's purview to the city council's attention. Comments will be limited to two minutes. State law prohibits the council from acting on items that do not appear on the agenda. Public comments for this meeting will also be conducted electronically. Any person interested in addressing the council may submit a comment by emailing recorder at herriman.gov or by visiting herriman.gov/AgendasAndMinutes, where there's a link to fill out an online public comment form. Your statement will be incorporated into the public record. I will say this, we still want to hear all the comments, absolutely, tonight, but we won't do back and forth. We do have some, we'll discuss what we've already talked about with Gina Road. We had some conversations before this, and staff has been discussing this. So just so you know, we are aware, but we still want to hear your comments tonight. So I'm not trying to shut it down at all. Just know that we've, it won't be a back and forth, but we will kind of discuss stuff at the end, if that makes sense, because we've got some ideas, so. Okay, with that being said, I will just go down the list of the ones I have. We'll start with Jillian De Mars.
Gina Road is unsafe, point blank, especially as we've seen with the spring. The traffic has increased immensely, and it's dangerous traffic. It's traffic of people in their cars drifting because they find it thrilling, I'm guessing, but it's turned into two accidents in just the past two weeks. And my children walk on the dirt road to their school every morning and every afternoon. And with the damage coming from those rocks, I'm so, I'm so worried that the next thing that brings this to the council's attention is going to be an injury or worse. And so something has to be done for the safety, let alone the frustration we all feel at the paving not happening. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Jillian. Okay, we'll go to Dallas Hamilton.
Thank you. Appreciate you hearing us today. I've attended multiple meetings about this specific topic. We met with the city specifically in the old building. I've been in my, my house for 15 years now. Regularly heard, you know, budgeting, it's in the planning, we don't own the land. The same silliness for years and years. Met in September of 2019 in this building downstairs to hear the city's excitement that ordinance had been enacted, that we were going to be able to utilize eminent domain-style processes to obtain the land that we needed to move forward. And we're six years down the road and zero progress. I, I just don't understand the lack of attention to it. I don't think it's a budget thing. I don't think it's a land thing. I think we just don't have the right person with the motivation or concern to get things moving. It's going to take effort from somebody in the city. We really need to get it done. It, it's silly to spend money on some of the things that we spend money on when we don't have basic infrastructure taken care of. So, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dallas. Tyler De Mars.
Thank you for your time today. And similar concern, number one, we're looking for the safety of the street. It's, we have kids, not just our kids, but multiple kids that walked up and down. Yeah, it's not only kids, but the ones that were injured were, they weren't little kids. It was, you know, teenagers, and it could have been a lot worse. I was one of the first ones on the scene after that recent accident, and all he could say was, "I'm so lucky. I'm so lucky." And I'm glad that he is okay, truthfully. Very glad that he's okay. Don't want anyone to get hurt. But it could have been, could have been way worse. We're concerned for when that happens, and we don't want to wait for something like that to happen for real action to be put forth. I would love to get as much information, respectfully. I'm, would love to know what needs to happen, what are the next steps, what are the, the roadblocks. And my biggest concern is, I know that we had it on the docket, and for years, I had it in my mind, oh, okay, we can hold out till 2027. I understand that that just got pushed back five years. And we are the little guy in the full city, in the full spectrum of the full city. I understand, there's a lot of things and a lot of demands on the budget and time and resources. But I feel like it'll be very easy to kick us down the road and put excuses in front. So I would love to see some action there and not be, not continue to be pushed back. So my request really would be, if I could be, could make one, is to reconsider that five-year extension. For myself personally, is, that's why I haven't, I've been excited about that. Said, all right, I can hold out. But I'm worried that that's going to continue to get pushed down. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tyler. Zach Gordon.
Good evening, everybody. So I built, I built Blue Sage Lane out, the paved road that comes off of Gina. Worked with the city a lot on that. And I was told that when the infrastructure on 7300 was redone, Gina Road would be most likely incorporated into that redo. Now 7300 is obviously done. Nothing has then happened to Gina. I have a bunch, I have three boys that walk to the school as well. We all have boys. I've actually reached out to Justin, Public Works, asked if I could just pay out of my pocket to put a sidewalk in from my house down to the road. Justin says, no, I'm not able to do improvements on city property because I have given that land over to the city, along with the 24, around $24,000 fee in lieu, which I also gave when I gave the property. So like, we're super willing, I feel like. I've even actually brought multiple of the other neighbors in and had, who was Delinda? I can't remember her name at the city at the time. And I had them sign the property over to the city. But the city didn't have, there was stuff in the letters that weren't right, and he had trouble recording it. We have other neighbors that are willing to give up the property as well. There is a couple holdouts, but I think we can figure out ways around those. So I, I think that we just want to see action, you know, we just want to see like, the city take it as serious. Because honestly, 25 miles an hour on that road is too fast. You will lose control at 25 miles an hour. I personally put in a 15 mile an hour sign. I try to control the speed myself, but I can't. But maybe if we can get officers patrolling the road when kids are going to and from school, maybe there's something we can do to try to help at least keep the kids safe in the time being. And then we can figure out other solutions from there. Just so you know, like, we're willing to work. You have me, like, I'm, I'm willing to pay for the sidewalk to keep my kids safe. So, but thanks for your time.
Thank you, Zach. John Bushy. If I say your name wrong, I apologize.
Well, I'm, I'm the same as all the other neighbors. I live on Gina Road, and I'm just sick of everything. My attorney's been in contact with Harriman. We're going to do something. We're sick of it. And so I talked to the police. The police said they won't issue citations there and everything because it's private land. Okay, if it's private land, then I'm going to close my section. And people won't be able to drive on the road anymore. I'm sick of all the speeding. I'm sick of all the problems. Illegal vehicles driving up and down, unbelievable speeds. So I'm sick of it. That's all.
I appreciate it, John. Thank you. Tom Barnes.
Well, first off, I'd like to say that I met with council member Anderson Monday. At the breakfast, she sat down, and we talked. She wasn't so much knowing about Gina Road, but she's going to know.
She's going to, we'll catch her up quick tonight.
She's going to learn real quick. Our road was directly impacted two weeks ago, and the rollover just happened to be in one of the council member's daughter's home. So you know that. I've been out here for 30 years. I've seen a little progress on the road, but not a whole lot. As far as I know, it's the only gravel road in the city. And why just us? Why is it not being done? I know there's people that have private property. I would say, pay them off. Pay them off at the appraised value. Forget sidewalks and curbs. We need pavement. If you're not willing to go that far, I think you have the money. I don't think there's a lack of money. I really don't. Put some rubber speed bumps along that road, maybe five. That'll slow people down real fast. It's a temporary thing, but it should be done. There's other areas of this city that don't have sidewalks. Most of it's in Old Harriman. They have asphalt but no sidewalks. Rose Creek Estates has no sidewalks in some of the areas. 13900 South partially has no sidewalks. 134 South from 60th West, west through Hamilton Lane, there's no sidewalks. What I'm saying is, we need asphalt. We don't necessarily need a sidewalk. Listen to the people on Gina Road. Listen to the will of the people. I, I think the people could be paid off that are private property, did I mention that, with the appraised value. Pay them. What's the holdup? This is an important project, just as much as any other project in the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We'll go to Beth Moss.
Hello. I live on Gina Road, and the car almost hit my neighbor's house in about six feet from my block wall. My husband and I always worry that our fence is going to be damaged. As Tom Barnes was saying, that we should pay the people off. I often hear the excuse, we can't do it because one person says no. I've talked to this one person and this one person, and his spouse have told me that they haven't been given a fair price. And they've been told that they'd have to give up their water rights, their well and hook into sewer. And I can see why that is very unfair. I have a well and water right, and it costs a lot of money for us to save up for that. And I can see, as a senior citizen without a job, I wouldn't want to have to start paying a water right on a, on a well that I spent over 30,000 in water rights. So I think there needs to be fair compromise with this person. They should be able to keep their well. They should be able to keep their sewer the way they want it. And their land should be paid for and equal what it's worth. And I think it's unfair that we don't have lighting. We don't have sidewalks. And that's, I'd just like to see that person not be used in excuse. And I don't know his situation. I don't know. But I feel like we're always thrown that, that excuse. And it's not just the road being paved, but we always have potholes. I have, my struts go out every year, and my husband has to replace them. My child has been walking home from school and splattered in absolute mud when people are trying to dodge the potholes. And she comes home just filthy, and I'm scrubbing her clothes. And I've had parents not even want to drop off kids at my house. They'll say, I'll just drop off my kid, the kid at the end of the road, and call me, and I'll pick them up there, because I don't want my car dirty. I've had parents not want to carpool because they don't want to drive on our road. And I, I just think that's unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Adam Orm.
Well, thanks for letting me come and speak. Some of you may have forgotten my email. I'm the one who wrote that email. My background, I'm a commercial architect, so I kind of know a lot of the games that are played. A little embarrassed to let you know that my daughter slowed down in front of her friend's car last afternoon. And he thought it'd be funny to pass her, and it was right in front of our house. He lost control and ran into the side of my daughter's car. We've worked with the parents. They're going to take care of the car. But he wasn't going over the speed limit. He just was going out around the side. And we're talking to him. He says, just so you know, that is the favorite street by high school kids to come and drive on, so they can drift. You can lose control, not even going the speed limit. So the other thing, too, I'm just wanting to reach out to what you know, with environmental safety and phase one testing, I've talked to several of my engineers. They have mentioned that out in this area, before developments can happen, a lot of the concerns are with the grounds and being contaminated. I would like the city to do some type of dust test. I get a lot of dust in our house. We have a lot of asthma. And I have no idea if that's even contaminants that we're breathing in. I know crushed asphalt, which was put down, has particles. That's not stuff you're supposed to be breathing. Again, those are different spores that I'm not too worried about. But if there are contaminants that are left over from the Kennecott Mine, and that is being kicked up and blown around to us, I think that's in your guys' effort as the public road, to make sure that dust that's coming into our houses and that we're breathing is safe to do so. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, that's all the forms I have. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment tonight? Okay. Do I want to kind of address Sheri? I'm going to turn to you. I know this is...
Yeah, I want to make a comment.
Yes, we don't have to.
So there is absolutely nothing that you guys talked about tonight that has not been said at our council meetings, I promise you. Because I've voiced every single one of these concerns, along with the, why do we keep getting kicked down the road and kicked down the road? I can promise you that the last decision was budget, but at some point, we have to say sorry. Something else has to stop. The comment about the only gravel road in the city, this is the only gravel road city-owned in this city. We, we went through a big strategic plan process over the last couple of years to create a strategic plan. And there was some frustration because it's like, well, why are we just talking about the infrastructure? Let's talk about the big plan for the city. Well, the big plan for the city very first should have to be infrastructure. The big plan for the city should be that we should be able to pave our roads. The big plan for the city should be able, the city should be, whoops. The big plan for the city should be, let me slow down, that we, that we, that we highlight the safety of our community. That has to be first. Now, I've lived out there for, I can't remember how many years now I live on 7300. And my kids walk down a dark street with no sidewalks to the school bus down at the end of, on Main Street, all the time. But I knew every car that drove, that drove up and down our road also. That was before all the new subdivisions came in. And it wasn't near the safety issue. But now it is. Now we get more and more traffic, and now we're getting a reputation for, oh, let's go drift on this road. That's great. When you have little kids playing on it, not just walking to and from school, but playing, riding their bikes, riding their horses, whatever they're doing. And there has to be, and I hear what you're saying, Tom, about the sidewalks, but there's too many kids in, on that street now, not to have some sort of place for them to walk. So I don't know. We've talked about it a lot. Sometimes it's, it's, it's a, oh, please don't bring up Gina if Sheri's here again. But it's not because the council doesn't care about it. It's because it's, it's a frustration to try and figure out how to address it. But we've discussed it tonight. It'll be on, I assume, the next agenda, right?
We'll try and get it on for the next agenda. We have to have that all done by tomorrow. So that's sometimes hard.
Sure.
But for sure, I would prefer the next agenda, because I think it's a little lighter than the 25th, so.
Yeah, and because it doesn't have to be, I mean, we just need to be hammering through some ideas, even if some presentations aren't all the way ready. At this thing, we have, we have to come up with some solutions besides, well, and, and you're right. I don't think that the gentleman you're referring to, just because he's not here, won't necessarily mention his name. But he's always been very reasonable to talk to when I've talked to him. I don't think we've ever went to him with a formal proposal. It's just been, we knew we'd have to buy it. Well, not too many people like to give up their land. So yeah, I agree. There should be, and, and that's how we treat a 7300. That's how we've treated every other prop, every other road we've been putting in, is you go through and you pay a fair market value for the land people own. So those are, those are my opinions. There has to be a solution, more than we're going to do it in 2032?
2033 is where it's here.
2033.
So as councilors, it's a three and a half million dollar project. Trying to figure out where that fits with the other 6,000 West. There's some, we have a bunch of obligations that were entered into, I think, before anybody on this council was here, that we're dealing with right now, in the, in this current budget that we're sitting in, add to the tune of about $15 million we had to come up with to build those. So we bonded for that, to build 6,400 West. Some agreements that were entered into back in like 2015, that the city would build those contractually. So we are trying to do it. We did meet internally, talking about, frankly, get the, get the process going on trying to acquire the lands. We have changed those processes once I got here, that we, we approached, we use a real estate agent, and we, we will try to acquire those properties if, if they're not part of a development and dedicated. So that, we're going to try and move up. And then really, it's going to be as counsel, as we head into the 2027 budget, as you look at how much money we were projecting to bring in that can be dedicated towards those types of capital projects, how that all shakes out with, as you all know, the, the, the needs and the infrastructure and the, some of the wants that come in front of the, the city council are, far exceed what our revenues are. And so how we do that. But certainly, it'll be part of that 2027 budget cycle, which will start in January. It, it will be on your list. You'll just have to tell us where it fits.
Tell me on the three and a half million, how much of that is, if we look at some alternative designs on some of that, can we whittle some of that down? Are we anticipating?
More of a Bryce. So about 600,000 of that is a water line or some, some improvement. So it's about 2.9 million for, and then there's another 300,000 for right-of-way acquisition and those kind of things.
Yeah, and, and built into that three and a half is inflation for going out, you know, so much time. Originally, the cost estimate was for 2022, and it was 2.4 million, 2.3 million. But yeah, we've already kind of modeled it after McHouston or McQuiston Road, that kind of the same design where we're cutting out the park strips. We have mountable curb and sidewalk right up against the asphalt. So we've tried to minimize the cost as much as possible. But, but yeah, including sidewalks, curb gutter, pavement, and then the necessary utilities that go along with that storm drain, as, as Nathan mentioned, the water line to go through there. So there, I mean, there might be some potential to remove the water line, but at some point, we're going to need the water line. And so we don't want to build a road and then have to go and cut it all up later, right? And so we've tried to minimize the cost. I mean, with direction, we could look at even, even more options as far as cutting costs. But the design has been completed. There was a good effort in funds provided for in, in 2022 to design the road. And we did try to minimize the cost. And it has been designed. But yeah, there, there could be some consideration moving forward if, if we get some movement on, on the project to, to look at additional ways to save money.
And sorry, another frustration that was voiced, too, from some of the residents was this fee in lieu that we have charged. And we've taken money from people and dumped it in a pot, and it's going to be the exact same problem we had with our, with our detention ponds and things like that. 24,000 or whatever, that's not going to be anything a few years from now. So that's confusing to me, why we're, we've taken fee in lieu for stuff that we have no intention of doing or for 10 years. And that money's going to be not worthless, but way below what it was going to cost.
Right, yeah.
That could be part of the agenda thing, too, just addressing those kind of things. Because I have issues with that, taking fee in looms if we're not going to do something within a specific timeframe that's going to make it occur.
Typically, I, I don't know, we've taken them since I've been here. I don't, I don't like the fee in lieu process for that, simply because of that. There are other, other mechanisms we, we've talked about with the attorney that we could look at in the future. Again, we only have one, I don't want to spend a ton of time figuring out, well, how do we deal with, we have one more gravel road. And so we have, we have a design. The water line, if that comes out, has its own funding source. So the water line is not the issue. It is the asphalt in, in the general fund, the 2.93 million dollars in the general fund in 2033. It's less come forward. It really is just a balance of, we have a lot of big deferred maintenance projects, like 6,000 West that need to be done, that carry a lot of traffic. At some point, this has to be prioritized, or else it'll, it'll be the easiest one to always move.
Always. That's the problem.
Would?
So in the process, we go and get the willing sellers or get documentation for that right of access, right of ways. Then are we able to go to other third parties, say the state, or even the feds to supplement, or their programs, or avenues for money on that respect?
We, we talked about today about some grant programs specific for this kind of road. The biggest challenge, one, we should acquire the, the property before we go talk to them.
Correct.
But the, the bigger problem is, most of those funds are being programmed five and six years out. So we're not really gaining any time with those.
That's closer than 10 years, though.
That is closer than 10 years.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
I would say to your point, I think, this might sound like I'm kind of, I'm not, it's not tuning my horn at all, but I think equality of a good leader is admitted when you're wrong, when you've messed something up, when you've missed the mark. And I think, I think we missed the mark. I think this has been an eye-opener for the past couple of weeks. I think it's time to get serious. I think it's time to go find, we've talked about it. I think we do, city-wise, we're strapped. We know that. But I think there's, there's priorities that we can talk about with state leaders, with county leaders. I think those are, we've got to make these priorities right now. This has to be priority one, our ask with our legislature this year. I think we've got to make it a priority one, to understand. We've been asked to absorb a lot of growth out here. That's why we're struggling to pay for this existing stuff, is we're paying for growth. And I think that's, you know, tomorrow, that's a discussion I need to have with the governor. When I meet with the governor tomorrow, is, we can't build these roads because we're having to pay for so much growth that you're, it's being asked of us out here. And so I think we've got to do better. And I, I can't say anything else, but we apologize. And that's, I truly mean that. I think we've, Sheri, to... I think we've, Sherry, to Sherry's credit, Sherry has beat this drum. Sherry has represented your area well, she's fought. And so shame on us, I think, a little bit. And that's just on us, it's not on our staff, that's on us, for maybe not recognizing this. And I think we've used that easy excuse to say we couldn't acquire the property. I think that's kind of been a crutch we've leaned on, and so I think it's time to take the next steps. And I don't think it's anything malicious we haven't intended to, but I think this has been an eye-opener for us to say, it's time to act, so.
Sometimes it's because it's little, but I can tell you, I just spoke to, well, I left a very ranting voicemail during interim to our state rep, expressing exactly what you're talking about, just saying, you guys have dumped so much stuff on us with mandates, telling, you have to build this many houses, build this many houses, build this many houses, and we got dirt roads out here, we can't afford to pave. So I think that exactly, we just have to find the money.
I think, I mean, some of the hiccup here is, it's not shovel-ready, right? Because we don't have that access.
So we've got to take that next step.
So that's that first step, is to get that right-of-way. The other small nuances, sewer, well, all those things can come, all those things can get figured out pretty, so, to each homeowner, each different property, those things can get solidified and figured out.
Yeah, let me just point out, the city doesn't control the sewer utility. This may be what, Councilor Orne could probably speak to you very ultimately, about what they're requesting and those hardships, but that wasn't, that's not the city of harriman, that is the Jordan Basin Improvement District who controls the sewer.
Yeah, and I sit on the chair, I'm the chair of that board, so I can speak to that specifically, is there are hardship exemptions, there's just a simple form and a process, it's very, very easy to do. So that shouldn't be a holdout or a reason to not do that.
So I don't want to get, I mean, we could belabor this, I would say to the residents here, we have, we've already talked to staff, we're going to take the different steps to acquire the property. Rather than asking for that, we are going to take the steps to acquire this, to pay for the right-of-way, to where that opens the door, that we can go start lobbying for these monies right-of-way. So, I can say for me, I don't want to see this done in 10 years, I don't want to see it done in five, I want to see it done in one to two years. I truly, I think we have to make that a priority, if not soon, right? So I think we have to do what we can now, to get on it as soon as we can.
Yeah, I think the biggest shock to me was when I saw it come up, because I've seen it come off a few times, but then I felt very confident last time it was put on, that yep, we're getting, we're acquiring property in '26, it's getting paved in '27, it's still a couple of years out, but it's there, it's happening. And then when I saw it go further down, I was.
Just a couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Not a happy camper, because it just feels like, it'll always be the small road, it'll always be just a few people, it'll never have the traffic on it 6000 has, it'll never have the traffic on it 6400 has, but it does have people's lives on it, does, has people's children on it. And it, if it's our road, then it's our responsibility. And I think in the meantime, that mag chloride is sounding better and better, we should have never stopped putting that dust mitigation on there, that needs to get done also.
So, we are moving forward with that, on the public portions of the road. So there'll be parts of it that are still private, but we, as the mayor said, I think, really the first step is to just try and acquire. I know there was mention of eminent domain. You only go to eminent domain if you can't come to an agreement. And my understanding, talking to staff who've been here longer, I don't think we've ever approached the one individual with an offer, was, hey, please just donate this, so.
So we'll have more answers down the road, if you'll bear with it. We're going to try to start acquiring the property, our staff's going to come back to us at the end of next month, our second June meeting, right? Is that what you're saying?
I was looking where Bryce was at, it's how fast we can put something together, I don't know what he has in.
Yeah, the staff report might be a little bit light, because it's due tomorrow, but yeah, we could put it on the next agenda if needed.
We'll put it in the work meeting, so you can give us some direction. The funds were always in the 2027 budget, I don't think they're in the 2026 for the land purchase, so that would be part of a budget amendment, but we can at least talk about some ideas.
And I'm going to personally call the county tomorrow, I will make a note to call the county tomorrow and see what buckets of money are available at the county. Councilmember Perucci from Riverton has brought that up too, that there's buckets of money that we need to tap into. So again, and what I say, a couple of years, like, we're going to do everything we can, go as fast as we can now, this point, like, truly, that's, I think it's a priority for us now, and so we'll do what we can. Like I said, I'm just trying to be, this, the hardest thing for all of us, none of us are patient, we're all type A personalities, we wish we could do tomorrow, just government works so painstakingly slow, and getting money, it's a lot about, we can't go get a check tomorrow from the county and build this, and so, but we'll start making calls, we will do, like, message received, truly message received, and we'll, I think you've got four of us now, probably five of us that are on your side now, and we'll do what we can now to move this forward, so. And I'm not just saying that, I mean, I'm truly not saying that because we're here, I think it's been the eye-opener with the two accidents, and that video scared all of us, I think, and we all know Lorena, she does a lot for the community, and I think that was, we know her kids, and we know Sherry's grandkids, and I think that was an eye-opener, and so yeah, so we'll get to work.
I would have sent out that video even if that wasn't my daughter's house, because it's somebody's daughter's house, so thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you again to, not only for you guys to show up tonight, but Adam for your email, and we actually got the video the night before, I believe it was, and it was definitely one of those like, okay, how were the occupants? And knowing they walked away is just mind-boggling, but yeah, that accident was one of the worst ones I've seen, not just on city roads, but on, for a long, long time. So, thank you for being active participants in the community and coming. It's daunting to stand there and speak for two minutes, but it's, it not only shows your level of involvement, but shows your passion for it. And if I lived on that road, I would be here every Wednesday night as well. So, stay tuned in, especially next, in two weeks, we'll have that meeting and discuss that. You can watch it online, it's broadcasted, you can come in person, but yeah, just stay involved, please.
Yes, thank you for how professionally you've been tonight, you all handled this with a frustrating situation with absolute class, so thank you, truly thank you for being here, and we'll do, we'll take it from here, so, we'll do what we can, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to our city council reports for tonight. Tonight, we'll start with Teddy.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had, we had the sewer board meeting yesterday morning, the Jordan Basin Improvement District, I keep on forgetting we have a real name now. So, it went very well, there's some updates on that, we also talked about rates and changes, but nothing to report on any rate changes, so that's positive. Other than that, I believe that's it. I did miss a board meeting this morning, I'm sure that the chamber's going to talk on about that, or, with their presentation today. But, yeah, that's it, Mayor.
Okay. Sherry?
Just the Water and Recycling District, we had our board meeting, I reported a little bit in the work meeting, that we went ahead and let them know that we are interested in withdrawing from the district, and we'll see how that process goes. The district is doing well, you should be, if you haven't already, you should have gotten postcards for the scrap program, the seasonal container program, so watch for those in your mail if you haven't already got those. They had given priority to people who were on the waiting list from last year that didn't get the containers last year, so you would have gotten an extra day to reserve a container if you were on the waiting list from last year. So hopefully, people are participating in that program and can utilize that to alleviate anything you want to go to the dump that you don't want to have to haul yourself.
Perfect, thank you. Tara, nothing? We'll get you next time. Okay, and I do not have anything worth bringing forward to the council right now at this point, so we'll move to item 8.1. Tonight, we welcome Councilmember Andy Perucci from Riverton to do, give us a update on the Jordan Valley water increase.
Thank you so much.
And you have three minutes.
Fantastic. It's nice to be on this side. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you, I wish I had more positive news. I mean, bottom line upfront, there is going to very likely be a property tax increase from the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, and harriman will receive overall a 1.5% water rate cut, so property tax increase for residents, water rate cut for the city. Councilmember Anderson, you probably already know this, but if not, since I was in your position where I got appointed midterm and had to learn pretty quickly, the city provides water, gets water at wholesale rate from the water district, and then you guys sell it at a retail rate to your residents, or provide it at a retail rate to your residents. So, your wholesale rate will be reduced overall by 1.5% as a city, under the proposed budget plan that should be voted on next week. I was in communication with Mayor Palmer in advance of the current budget discussions, and he knows this, but I was the lone no vote on the budget proposal. I represent harriman in Riverton now, I previously represented Riverton, harriman, and Bluffdale, but the district boundaries changed a couple of months ago, and so it's just our two communities. My council district is on the border, I represent the far western part of Riverton, so my wife's from harriman originally, my in-laws live in harriman, my kids are playing here in harriman right now in a park while I'm speaking to you, because my mother-in-law's watching them. And so, I love harriman, I love our southwest valley, and I love the communities here. I also talked to a lot of people in harriman and in Riverton about property taxes, and I know all of us are tired of seeing them go up, all of us. And I know that you guys have to consider a whole host of costs, and you agonize over any property tax increase that you have to make as a city, and I don't feel like that same level of cost discussion happened at the water district level. There were cost discussions, but I feel like there were more cuts that could have been made, and so that's why I voted against it, and I just wanted to account to you as a council, because I represent not just the people of Riverton, but you as well, on the board for the next few years. Councilmember Orne did a fantastic job on the water district board, and thanks to her advocacy and education efforts and legislation that was run this year, we have realized some cost savings from the removal of fluoride from the Jordan Valley's water. That's actually saved the water district about $700,000 a year. Initially, they wanted to utilize that money, that savings, to bring down the water rates, but I advocated instead to bring down the property tax hike, so the property tax increase is $700,000 lower than it would have been for the water district, but it is still going to be an increase there. So I have some slides, they are provided for you, these are like snapshots of the 100-plus-page packet that I get at every board meeting, so I just pulled a few of them for you to provide, but happy to provide the full packet if you ever really want to read that, it's pretty intense. So, and feel free to jump in and ask questions as we're talking. Really high level, this is how, this is the proposed rate design for the water district. Just, I'll let you read the information, but at a really high level, the district, what they try to do is look at how much it costs to provide the water to each member agency, and to charge accordingly. And so, because of that, your rates are going down 1.5% because the cost to deliver to harriman has gone down. All right, let me, where do I aim it? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I tried to push it, but it wasn't working. Again, this is just to show you the overall adjustment for the entirety of the district. There's a fee for the size of meter, that's not going to change, and then the surcharge per zone is going to change. And so, when I said your overall rate is going down, that's accurate, but you have two different zone surcharges, different elevations, which cost different amounts to get the water to those areas. One zone, if you don't mind clicking, two, there we go. So the CS zone surcharge is actually going to be increasing by $1.23, but then the DS zone surcharge for you is going down by $4.54, and then your overall charge is going down by $10.36. So you will be seeing a decrease overall, but a slight increase in your CS zone surcharge. Again, this is the wholesale rate that you pay to Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District for your water, and this is per acre foot of water. You're one of a handful of cities, you're actually, I think, yeah, there's only, there's no other city that's seeing a decrease like this, but you've had pretty high rates too. So, I'm excited to see that for you. I'll talk a little bit about, can you actually go to the other slide deck? Because I wanted to focus most of my remarks on that one. One of the things that I wanted to highlight for you is, the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District gets its revenue from a couple of different sources. One is water rates, the sales of water, both to wholesale member agencies, and then to retail customers. The other is property taxes. We've been talking about philosophically what those different buckets of money mean. The property taxes are meant to reflect the overall public good of water, because you're not paying for what you're using, you're paying based upon your property, your property tax value. Whereas your water rate, you're paying based upon consumption, so you have a choice on how much you're paying. Sorry, I don't know if the other one, if you guys had it available, it was just in the attachment, but, so I can talk through it, just, I have it on my phone, I can just talk through it. But this district had never really had a true understanding of the public value of the water that they provided, until the legislature required them to do a study. And so that study has been done, and they were, the district has been able to determine that the value of the public benefit of water, which is things like water that's pumped through your fire hydrants, or the recreation benefit of reservoirs, or the, let's see what else are considered public levels of service, I have a whole list, flood control, groundwater management, there's an endangered species benefit for some perspectives, a conservation benefit, there's a whole bunch of different public benefits. The value of the public benefit provided by Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District is $20 million. The overall amount of revenue that the district receives in property taxes is over $30 million, it's around $33 million under this current budget. So that's about $13 million above what can be considered the public benefit of water. As your representative on the board, I've been advocating for us to reset that structure so that residents aren't overpaying for the public benefit through property taxes, and instead are paying for the value of the water that they're receiving based upon the water that they're using.
If you don't reset it there, are they going to reset it at the legislature? Because that was what the.
I think there's a, well, I think it'll be, it's going to be a multi-year discussion at the legislature, but I think that's where it's going to go eventually.
Me too.
Yeah.
I think that'll help with conservation as well, right? If you're getting billed just for the water you're using, you're going to use less.
Yeah, and it also, it better captures who's using water, and who's, and the people that are using are paying it more accurately, because right now, school districts aren't paying property taxes, nonprofits don't pay property taxes, several different organizations within harriman city don't pay property taxes, and, but they do pay water rates. And so, if we are expecting our residents to pay $13 million more over the entire district, than the benefit that they're receiving from the public good, I just, I think there's an imbalance there. And so, again, I'm just one person on the water district, and obviously, I'm in the minority on my perspective on some of these budget discussions, but I think overall, we have a winning argument that you should pay for what you're using, rather than subsidizing the product for others, so. Let me, thank you guys for pulling it up, sorry, I didn't mean to throw renter plans on this. Just really high level, I'll go quickly for you, this is the schedule, we have been talking about the budget for a really long time at the district, we actually had a hearing on the water rate at our meeting on May 14th. There were like, there's one person that came and spoke, a resident from Sandy. The actual budget with the water rates and property tax rate will be passed on, at our next meeting on the 4th of June, and then assuming. And then, assuming it will have the actual property tax increase that is proposed right now passed on June 4th, there will be a public hearing for the property tax increase, a truth and taxation meeting on August 13th. The new rate will be triple, so the water district is able to assess a water property tax rate of 004. It actually hasn't ever done at that level. The new rate will be a triple oh, three, four. Let me make sure I have it right.
Is the hearing at 6:00, Andy?
It's at 6:00, yeah. At the water district offices in West Jordan. Let me pull it up. The new rate will be triple oh, three, four, five. So, still below the triple oh, four, which in fairness, I want to point that out. It's not the actual full statutorily maximum amount that the district can assess. They haven't assessed that in a while, actually. And these are estimates, because the actual certified tax rate hasn't been brought forward. I did want to, though, highlight a couple of projects that are in the budget that'll benefit Harriman in particular. They're not on this list. So, there's the Southwest Aqueduct, which is like a $20 million-plus project that's spread out over multiple years, and so that's part of the budget. We've had some fantastic traffic challenges in Riverton because of that, and Harriman too. You guys benefited from that when parts of 1/34th have had some shutdowns. And then, the Rosecrest Road Transmission Capacity Upgrades are also included in the budget, which will directly benefit Harriman. There's actually going to be a total of $82.9 million in capital projects that are in the 25, 26 Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District budget. And of that, the vast majority will actually be used to increase water capacity in the overall system. So, they break up the capital projects, Councilmember Orrin knows this, by what, those that'll just rehab existing infrastructure that will not increase water capacity, those that will increase water capacity, and then those that are just kind of like maintaining the existing infrastructure. And then, there's the conservation piece. So, the vast majority of the capital, capital project fund, which is the largest portion of the budget other than personnel, goes towards adding new water capacities to the district. A couple of other, oh, the reason also, just for your awareness, of why I'm not comfortable with the property tax increase, it's, the total is going to bring in around $3.3 million, which doesn't sound like a ton. And I know we're, at the end of the day, we're not talking about a ton of impact on people's lives, but it does matter to those that have fixed incomes. And it's an 11% increase, but that 3.1 million, I felt like we could have found cuts in the budget. I'll give you an example. There's the Water Conservation Garden at the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District offices. It's effectively a park for West Jordan that we all pay for, and it's being upgraded. And that project costs about a third of the overall property tax increase. And so, I'm just not comfortable asking people in Harriman and Riverton to pay more in taxes so that the people of West Jordan can have a conservation garden park. And I say that because based upon usage, it's clear that the vast majority of the people that actually visit that park live in West Jordan, nowhere else. So, happy to answer any questions you have. I kind of went fast. I provided you all this information just for your awareness, but I also recognize you have a long agenda tonight. So, I want to respect your time.
Thanks for that information. I'm glad to hear that results of that study, because I was wondering how that turned out.
Me too. Yeah, I came out swinging at my first meetings last year, and they were like, well, there's a study, so let's see. And I'm like, okay, I'll wait. And now, the study, honestly, I think bolsters our argument of like, we should be reducing the property tax revenues.
And that's been the argument at the state too, is saying, why are we allowing this much? So, it's good to have some accountability.
I think so. And I think we should, I mean, it's just for us as cities, you know, people pay for what they use. They do that with trash. They do that with a whole host of the utilities we provide. And when we're asking them to pay more than that, I just don't think it's fair.
Well, thank you for pushing back and for pushing for accountability. I say thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Always good to find to be the only vote that says no.
It's a fun spot to be in. I wish I was more persuasive.
Is there other areas that are indicators that either a budget, where they can reduce budgets, or policies, or procedures, or things that they can change internally or externally that will?
In my opinion, yeah. So, there are a couple of things. One, I mean, there's a, the district is going to do a, it's a pay increase of 5%, which I feel like was high, given the, where the private sector is at, and honestly, where cities are at. I mean, we just, working on our budget like you guys are too as a city, and we're looking at a 4% increase. And so, 1% adds up. I wasn't just, I wasn't comfortable with a 5% increase, given where the benefits are already for the district. There's also just a whole host of projects that are on a constant cycle that I feel like could be staggered differently. And I made that argument of like, what it needs to be done, what's nice to be done right now, and can we really refocus the structure? And then, I have, my fundamental issue with how the budget is done is on their 10-year budget plan, they build in a rate increase every single year and a property tax increase almost every other year. That's baked into their long-term budget plans. And I, as a policymaker, I'm not comfortable with that, because they're discounting or taking for granted the decision-making process of the board. And I recognize that staff have to plan, and the structure, the process needs to be balanced. But I have issues when they do long-term budgets with, with constant increases and baked into that plan.
Are they, are they already advocating truth and taxation for every year then? Is that what they're doing?
Every other year, generally.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Perucci.
My pleasure.
Is there still a chance to catch your kids playing soccer or something?
They're just playing at Arches Park. It's an awesome park.
Arches is a great park.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. Okay, we will go to our Youth Council Legacy Project Presentation. Jackie, you can take point on this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm actually very excited to be able to have the opportunity to work with the Youth Council. And one of their responsibilities, they do have to do a legacy project that is a notable lasting service project that benefits the community, and they present that project to the council. So, we do have a few groups wanting to do their presentation. So, we are going to go ahead and start with Liam.
Hi, my name is Liam O'Pikens, and this is Hayden O'Pikens. And over the course of two days, Amber Olson, Kayden Lee, Hayden and I were able to scan cemetery records and water shares for our city's posterity. We scanned them on our phones and then uploaded them to a USB drive. We then organized the records by date. So, now everything has been recorded and organized. We thank you for allowing us to do this important project, and thank you for your time.
I love it.
Thank you.
Our next Youth Council member who's going to present is Violet.
Proud mom. I love it. Hi, Violet.
Hi. So, I'm Violet Anderson, and for my legacy project this year, I volunteered at the Columbus Center in their daycare. I volunteered multiple Tuesdays, helping the kids with toys and snacks and playing with them. I love volunteering there and seeing the ability it gave the parents to learn while we watched our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Violet.
John, our next speaker does have a presentation. Naya and Sydney.
Hi, my name's Naya, and...
I'm Sydney.
And this is our legacy project. So, we, for an introduction, we started this project wanting to make a big impact in our community. And our project focuses on the Harriman City Animal Shelter. So, for the need for this project, we started by talking to animal services, assessing the possible need. We later learned that the Harriman Animal Shelter changed locations, and due to this, they required many different supplies. To solve this need, to solve this need, we went door to door, asking the community if they want, if they would want to donate any of the needed materials, such as blankets, towels, toys. We also reached out via social media, and were met with a generous amount of donations.
Our objective consisted of helping the Harriman Animal Shelter. In order to do this, we collected and donated over 100 mini towels, many big towels, over 10 dog and cat beds, and some dog toys. After understanding the need and gathering all the materials, our original idea was to make dog toys. But after learning that beds and cleaning supplies were more necessary, we switched goals and coordinated with the South Jordan Rotary Club to make dog and cat beds.
I'm actually going to go back to the previous slide. As you can see in like the top right corner, those are what the beds looked like. They were no-so, just like felt blankets, but we filled them with stuffing and turned them into big enough beds to be used for the Harriman Animal Shelter, to be used for either cats or dogs. Some of the challenges we faced were coordinating with many large groups specific, for a very specific project, such as South Jordan Rotary Club and Harriman City Animal Shelter. Another one of our challenges was collecting and gathering the needed materials. When going door to door, some people didn't have like some of the things we needed, or they already donated them to other organizations. And I know there are many like smaller needs within the community, and then there are bigger ones. And a lot of the time, the smaller ones get overlooked. So, that's what our thing with this project was. We were trying to help with a very specific need. And then, our third challenges, challenge was making the beds. We learned beforehand, on the day of Rotary Club, how to make the dog and cat beds, and then took that experience and taught multiple large groups how to do it.
In the end, this project greatly affected the Harriman Animal Shelter, supplying them with many items that they could use for a long time.
Some of our biggest takeaways from this project was how easy it is to start a project, even if it's a big one. If you lay out a plan and some goals, you can build off from there and make a big difference in your community. It can be for something small or something big. If you have a goal in mind, it's possible. And that's the end of our project. I did forget, did we mention, oh, yeah, never mind. That's the end.
Perfect. Thank you, ladies.
And our last Legacy Project Report today is from Sadie and Kennedy.
It has like the phone.
Yeah. Okay, so, our project is called the Disconnect Effect. We have been working on it throughout the entire school year. We started back in September, and we kind of finished around February-ish. But it's still kind of an ongoing issue that is being dealt with.
Statewide.
Yeah.
Worldwide.
So, we kind of, we started this project when we got our new phone policy at our schools. It's, a lot of schools, especially in Jordan School District, have this new policy where they've been a lot stricter on phones, and it's kind of like a, if we see it, we take it. So, us, as well as a lot of other kids at our school, were kind of confused, and it almost felt like a punishment. So, we kind of wanted to dive deep into like why this was set in place. So, we kind of went into like the harmful effects and collecting data so we could figure out how to raise awareness for why this policy was actually set in place. And that kind of brings us to like, our primary target being our teens, and our secondary target being like the parents, because ultimately, the parents are the ones giving teens these phones.
Yeah, so, kind of like Sadie was saying, our whole rationale behind starting and creating this project is because of the problem that cell phones and especially social media has, like the effect it has on teenagers and adults, but especially teenagers, since their brains are still developing. So, here are just a few facts about cell phones and the harms that they can have and how harmful they really are, because at the end of the day, cell phones and social media becomes an addiction when it's overused.
So, we kind of, for our project, we wanted to figure out a good way we could spread awareness, especially in our school. So, we, you can see that through our project goals. We want to advocate awareness and encourage pro-social behavior, shift the paradigm about phones. Like we said earlier, raise awareness through meaningful events, and connect with various stakeholders. So, we, our key metrics were educating, our Social Strength Week, which we'll talk about later, and our event, and our benefits were awareness, acceptance, and adjustment.
Yeah, so, our kind of timeline behind all this was, at the beginning of our project, we met with a few, well, not a few, a lot of different key stakeholders. Lauren Palmer being one of them, Candace Perucci, our school admin, our school, like our Jordan School District, just a bunch of different people. Then, we took a survey of about 150, 200 kids, kind of asking them how they felt about the cellphone policy and what they would change about it. And then, the psycho, psychology insight, that's when we talked to our counselors, and we talked to them about students that came in and had problems with their cell phones. And then, we had our Social Strength Week, and then we had a post-survey once we did all of our events, which we surveyed those same students and saw how their opinion and their view of the cellphone policy had changed from the first survey to the post-survey.
So, yeah, for our Social Strength Week, just to kind of sum it all up, we created a short film with one of our friends who does films for our school. And then, so, we were the ones that planned this. I wanted to say, we were the ones that planned this week, and we got it like approved with admin and all this stuff. But we were lucky enough to have a lot of like the big clubs at our school help support us. So, on Tuesday, we had an activity with the School Service Club. On Wednesday, we had lunch games with our School Sources of Strength Club, which is like our suicide prevention club. And then, Thursday, we had a pancake breakfast that the SBOs helped us with. And then, on Friday, we did a roller skating event at Classic Fund Center. And we kind of used different channels of marketing, such as like flyers and stuff, social media, our video, and in-school audio to help promote this.
Yeah, and so, some of our project management tools that we use is communication, especially with our key stakeholders. We also had to take into account our budget, which was zero. So, we, so we kind of had to work around that and figure out like what clubs and what resources we could get for free, or we could borrow from these different clubs. And then, we also had to figure out and work around issues we have, we had, and create solutions for that. So, underneath this is just like our SWOT analysis that we made. Our strengths are school involvement. We were very involved with our school, like especially with all the clubs that we used. Weaknesses were, this is obviously a controversial topic. The different opportunities we found from this was facilitating social connections, which was our main goal. And the threats was event failure and pushback from students, because this is a very misunderstood topic.
So, one really cool thing about this project that we did is, a lot of kids were really against the phone policy at the beginning of the year, but as we kind of spread awareness, a lot of kids started to have positive feelings about the phone policy and understand why it was set in place. And that's why you can kind of see for our impact. We kind of show that social health and mental health and the phone policy can all work together to create a healthy teen, because ultimately, the phone policy helps with social and mental health of teens.
I think that's all. That's all we have. Okay.
Great job.
Let's give them all a round of applause. Let's give them all.
It would be impossible to say how cool our Youth Council is, but they rock, and they are leaders and great kids. Thanks for all you do.
And I will say, ladies, your last presentation, I, they were all great, of course, but look up, look up that, I'm trying to get this momentum going, I guess, around. It's a program called Real Day, R-E-A-L, Real Day. And it's the first day of the month, every first of the month. You're supposed to put your phone down, even for us adults, which is hard. I'm addicted. I'm on it all day.
My name's Lauren Palmer, and I'm a phone app.
But it's to put your phone down and go out and experience something real in the community. Just whether it's hiking, whether it's, and it's just to, for one day, to realize what, how attached we are to those phones, and really what we're missing out on in the world. So, I'm actually gonna try to talk to our youth council about taking up that initiative next year and kind of driving that, because I think, I mean, I look at my eight-year-old, he's already device-focused, you know, just because of school. So we've gotta, we've gotta get away from our devices, and so it's just one way. So, look that up. They've got an Instagram page. Don't watch my video on there, it's sloppy, it's, but, but follow their Instagram page. I would love to see us get involved as a city and kind of leading out on this, so. But, amazing, and all of you, you know how much we love all of you. You're all awesome. We miss Destiny. Destiny loves you guys. But you'll have now, we just talked about it today, you'll have two advisors on this city council now. You'll have Sheri is still an advisor, and then Tara is gonna be a new advisor for the, for the rest of the year. So you'll have two of us that are gonna be there to support you and move forward with you, so, hope to see you back next year, so. But thank you for coming tonight.
Good luck filling Destiny's gaping hole, huh?
Yes. Well, thank you guys. Thank you for coming. Okay, we'll move to item eight point three, our 2024 review of the South Valley Chamber. Jay Francis.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, I am here by our agreement to come and report on 2024. It only took us almost five months to get here. That tells you a little bit about what the first half of 2025 has been like for us, as well as your calendar. But before I start in my slides, I did want to introduce those I have with me. If you'd all stand, I have to look at them or I'll Jamie Jensen's our managing director, Dana is our member services coordinator and our events planner, Storm Dean is tourism. We loan him sometimes to visit Salt Lake and support Salt Lake. Maybe it's the other way around. Brayden's our marketing director, and Cory is our development director. And Missy and Jana, one's preparing for surgery tomorrow and one had surgery today, so we gave them the night off. And I think this is gonna cost me dearly, because I told them they'd be out of here by seven thirty. But thank you for letting me come, and Councilman Hodges, I was not gonna tell anybody that you missed the board meeting this morning, so. But we did have a great board meeting today at the Envision Utah Olympics chat with former Governor Levitt and Brad Wilson. It was, it was really done well. So this is, and we shared this with you a year ago, but this is what we do. We connect, educate, advocate, and grow. As we plan our events, whether it's a lunch, an education event, a meeting, seminar, we, we try to plan them around these four initiatives. Get, just jumping into things that we've done in 2024, we, our Women in Business Committee, we we held meeting lunches with First Lady Cox, Jeanette Bennett, Sarah Clayson, Holly Kirby. We had a nonprofit panel, and that's just, you know, six out of ten, five out of ten. And that we also did a service project for the Road Home. And then, probably the thing that I'm more pleased, most pleased about is our Junior Women Business, where we have twenty-five young ladies, seniors from all of the high schools in both of our school districts. And we, they get to mentor with our Women in Business. They come to all of the Women in Business programs. They do a service project, and then we, and just recently, we had a graduation in April, and we held that at the JACT, kind of fitting for education. And Mayor, I know you were there. We appreciate your support. And it was, it was kind of touching, because as I got to go and meet them and meet their parents, and have their parents tell us how, you know, besides, we give them a thousand dollar scholarship to a college or university of their choice, but their parents would say how much more they got than the scholarship, by being able to rub shoulders with these businesswomen, and to be able to spend those times together planning and being able to be, you know, kind of in the workforce, if you will, for nine months. Our Business Institute is something we're pleased about, and these are our four pillars, and I'll jump through them really quickly. We, we held two cohorts last year with twenty-six enrollees in our Business Accelerator. Alta Bank is pleased to support us with that. We call this our Mini MBA, and Taylor Randall at the U says, Jay, I'll only let you do that, but that's, but it really is, when you watch these small business owners come out of this class and apply the things that Ralph teaches them, it's fun to see them kind of launch, and even though they've been in business for a year or two or more, they apply these principles and they, they are able to launch. Couple of years ago, we had a solo attorney in the Business Institute. He was drowning in, in work. He had too much work. And Ralph took him aside and said, you've got to hire. He's, I can't, if I hire, I can't afford. I know that's less money for me. And he just, he kind of put it on paper, this is how you do it. And he said, please, bite the bullet, and if it doesn't work for you, I'll cover the cost. He said, what have I got to lose? Well, that was two and a half, two and a half years ago, three years ago, and a year ago, we held a ribbon cutting at his new office, where he introduced us to thirteen lawyers that worked for him, and four paralegals and three, three executive assistants. Because he learned the principles of be able to expand and be able to move on. We have two different events here on this slide. Our Leadership South Valley is something I wish that existed when I was in my mid-career. To be able to, each month, there's a different topic of healthcare, tourism, government, housing, sports, entertainment. And they get to learn from those who are doing this. And we, we've been to the airport, they got to do a tour out on the tarmac. We couldn't go in the airport, but we could go out on the tarmac, and they got to go see where the fire engines are and the, and the snowplows, and how that all works and how it's coordinated. They got to hear from the director of the airport. We've been to the, to UTA, to tracks. They got to ride tracks and hear from the UTA. We'll, we got future events. This next Thursday, a week from tomorrow, will be our environment, and so they'll hear about clean air, clean water, and we're gonna go to Rio Tinto, we're gonna go to a couple of other places. But the Water Conservancy in West Jordan, and then also the new water station that South Jordan has. And they'll go to Hale Center Theater, and they'll go from top to bottom. They'll go to the Delta Center. We spent a day up on the hill on our government day, and we had others come up there, but we were there all day, and we had legislators come in to speak. And so they're learning hands-on from people. And right now, we're going through one, and two of your folks are with us, and we love having them. Probably this year, and I know, maybe I'll come back and report about, but we were at the prison just, was it last month? And I have a whole new feeling and appreciation for what's going on there, and how they're taking care of the prisoners, and how they're trying to make them fit for, you know, getting back into the community. Our business bootcamps are designed for those who want to start a business, and they're thinking about, they're, they're making their widget in their garage, or they've got a business plan for, to be a consultant, or to be able to have a plan. And this is to help them be able to figure out how to do a marketing plan, how to do a budget. Yes, you have to pay taxes, you are, you and how do you get materials, and who's gonna put it together, and what's the cost of goods? And we, it's been fun to see some successes of some launches. And the other success that we have, and you're gonna think I'm a sadist, is that some, about, after, out of ten weeks, some about weeks six say, I'm not ready. But the class cost them five hundred bucks. We saved them thousands of dollars from launching way before they, they were, and so and then some have come back and said, I'm ready to relaunch and relook at this. So it really has been fun to be able to help these small bus, those entrepreneurs. I'd gotta really call them entrepreneurs, not just small businesses. Our Everyday Entrepreneur, that which, okay, I just told you about Everyday Entrepreneur. Speak up, guys. Our Business Bootcamp is, is around having small seminars for small businesses to learn and take advantage of some opportunities that we can put in front of them. Things I took for granted, you know, thirty-six years in corporate business, because I had my own CPA, I had my own IT department, I had my own HR department. But small businesses don't have that, but they need those resources, and there's places where they can go get them. They still have to follow certain hiring practices. They still have to pay taxes. They still need to know how to be able to access social media, even though they don't have an ID department. They need to know how to be able to do their own website. And our bootcamps, and it's really done on a smaller scale, sometimes between fifteen to twenty-two, maybe twenty-five people, because it's more of a workshop, really have a hands-on. And in June, it's gonna be on AI, and how small businesses can take, can take AI and create their own AI platform and personalize it. And when they leave the class, our instructor has said, they'll be rocking. And so I'm excited, because for me, AI was just ChatGPT, but. Our Let's Do Lunches, we alternate Let's Do Lunch and Meet the Member every other month. But we held four of those, and then we held four of our Meet the Members, but we had great speakers and great presenters. And that's something that we, we go for. If, if somebody's gonna take time away from their business, or their family, or their personal time, and come to one of our events, they need to leave our event saying, I met someone, I learned something, I'm better because I went. Not just go and, and meet other chamber members and put your card in a fishbowl and win two tickets to a movie theater. We want them to go away saying, I'm, I'm better because I went. And that's with all the things I've already talked about, plus, you know, our lunches. Our Meet the Member alternates on the others. This is something we started in 2024, last part of 2023, and is phenomenally successful. It's a lunch, but fifteen of our members sign up to make a presentation, and they get two minutes to be able to present their company, or their product, or what they're doing. And it's, we're already full till October, so they just, they just want to do this. And fortunately, it's done in the meeting room, the large meeting room next to our office, because they don't want to leave. But we can go back to our office and go to work, because they just stay and stay and stay. And we held five of those, and over seventy businesses got to pitch. Chamber 101 is where we invite all of our members, but particularly our new members, to come and learn how to make the most of your chamber membership. And Dana walks them through our Chamber Master Platform, which shows them how to connect, how to sign up for events, how to look at our calendar. And it's, this has been critically important for them to be able to engage. Our Connect After Hours have been wildly successful. And in fact, in 2025, starting in August, we're gonna start going every month. It's been every other month. And they've done a great job, the committee that plans these. They're organized, they're well-done, they're not I had to experience many years ago with an after-hours in Salt Lake that I said, man, we're not gonna do that. And they had to convince me that ours wouldn't be like that, and, and they were right, because they're doing a really good job. And they just wanted an atmosphere where they could come and connect, and be able to see each other. And, and they said, Jay, you're welcome to come, but we don't want you to talk. So that was, that was really good, so. Executive Forum and in the nose are seminars, if you will, that we put on as needed, as we see things coming. And so a lot of times, it's around political reports. We do them after the end of the legislative session. Last year, we did one around, you know, for those, learn how to connect with your legislators, learn how to connect with your local city, learn how to connect with a federal delegation, and the panel we had was phenomenal. You can see the one picture on the far right, there were some issues coming up with the point, and so we, we put together a in the know, so that people could come and hear firsthand from both the city as well as the point management. And from time to time, things like that will come up, and they're not calendared until we feel the need. Our committees, one of our committees is our ambassador committee. They are, we call them our lifeblood. They're, they are everywhere, and they support us in, in their daily jobs, when they go from, you know, out in the, the community, they come to all of our ribbon cuttings. They help us reach out to our new members and renewing members, and they are, are, not only our lifeblood, but they're also our mouthpiece. Our Government Affairs and Public Policy Committee, in 2024, we tracked twenty-plus bills during the legislative session. A lot of them were around housing, transportation, and economic development. And 2024, we took seventeen people to Washington DC on an advocacy trip, and it was really, really well-done. And this year, we're going in October, because they had too many associations going in May, they kind of asked us to, if we would, we go with four or five other chambers of our size. Our Small Business Committee helps us with our bootcamps. They keep us focused on what small businesses are needing and help us be able to keep track. They're the ones that said, hey, we need a Small Business of the Year Award, and that happened a few years ago. And then they said, we need that to be honored on the same stage as, as the Titans. And so at our big gala, which will come up in a minute, we, we honor our small business on the big stage, if you will. And they, they help us be able to continue to think, what can we do for small business? I would insert here that we were recently selected by Comcast to be able to promote out a five thousand dollar grant, which they call the RISE Program, throughout the South Valley. And for whatever reason, they carved out Cottonwood Heights and Mayor Wickers, and I said, I didn't do it, but and, but they selected Nashville, and Wichita, and Seattle, and one other city, and South Valley. Boston, yeah, a small city of Boston, and then the South Valley, so. And it ends the end of this week, but we're excited that we could, because of our reputation of helping and working with small businesses, that we were able to get that. We do podcasts that our Small Business Committee has helped with, and last year, Target River was our Small Business of the Year. We do three different golf tournaments. That's kind of where things kind of come together. We make a little money, we have a little fun, and we take care of the customer. But over four hundred participants in our golf tournaments last year. And our Shark Tank is one of the events that is high school kids that are in DECA and FBLA. They come and pitch to a panel of judges. We normally have ten or eleven teams this year. This last couple of weeks ago, we had seven teams. And the winning team, this, this is a 2025 insert report, but the winning team for 2025 was the team from Harriman, and they had a digital payment plan. It was phenomenal. And Brandon Fugel was one of the Sharks, and he said, I, I think I'm gonna invest in that. I told him I would buy it, and then I'd flip it and sell it, because somebody's gonna buy that. But, but again, this is one of those events, we, kind of like we heard from the youth tonight. You go away and just say, okay, I don't care what the ten o'clock news is telling me. The world's gonna be okay. We've got good kids out there, so. And then our Titan Awards is just something that, I had the opportunity back in 2019, when I was just serving on, as a board member of the chamber, to start. It was something that I felt like we could, we could do something, we could make a difference. And I said 2019, it was 2009. And last year, we honored Sandy Hendry, James Clark, Keith McMullin, and then I already mentioned that Brian Epperson was honored as our Small Business of the Year. We, in 2024, we were part of five ribbon cuttings in Harriman. And we've, when, when we have seven cities, we're keeping those scissors sharp, and we're doing lots of them. We had a hundred ninety-six total members, new members in this chamber. We had fifteen from Harriman. And we're excited to say that if, through all of our events, that between ninety and a hundred Harriman businesses attended our events. Women in Business, Let's Do Lunch, Meet the Members, the bootcamps, and so, and then all of the businesses in Harriman got one of the magazines that we produced with your double-page spread. And I believe that's my presentation for 2024.
Thank you, Jay and team. We appreciate, we've enjoyed the relationship. It's been fun. Appreciate what you're doing for our business community, and look forward to the future with you all.
It's a good choice from us to join you.
It was, so. So, thank you for being here. Sorry it's not seven thirty, so. But we'll let you go. Jay, make sure you pay them overtime. Okay, we'll go to our consent agenda. Nine point one, look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Motion by Teddy?
I'll second.
Here we go, second by Tara. Teddy?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, that motion carries. Okay, ten point one, consideration of an inter-local agreement with Salt Lake County to receive fifty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of right-of-way near Sentinel Ridge Boulevard in Hundred Thirty-Eight South. Blake?
Guaranteed to be last, longer or shorter than the last one. Okay, this is an inter-local agreement with Salt Lake County for Hundred Thirty-Eight South. This is between Mountain View Corridor and the border with Riverton and Bluffdale. This is a half-road that the north half is Riverton, south half's Harriman. Just some background on this. There was a reimbursement agreement that was approved by the council in last year, the end of 2024. And then this property was acquired from the developer and reimbursed per that reimbursement agreement. And so way before that, we went to the council of governments and got approval for corridor preservation funds for this right-of-way. Surprisingly, the, the county council sent an inter-local agreement over, approved with a resolution not very long ago. And so it took them only about five years or so to, to approve that. But this money will be able to replenish the capital projects funds that we'd already expended to reimburse the developer for this right-of-way. So this inter-local agreement just authorizes the county to send us those funds and re-recommend approval of it. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just have a question. Because I asked the question last two weeks ago when we paid five hundred sixty-two thousand dollars an acre. How come this cost of right-of-way was only forty-seven thousand for six point three acres?
Great question. So when this was appraised, corridor preservation only pays on appraised values. And this one was appraised in 2020. And so the property at the time was three hundred thousand dollars an acre. So that's just how much it's went up in the last couple of years.
Baggering to me. I actually spoke to a few people about this and they're like, seems like that department needs to be audited because why are you paying five hundred sixty-two thousand dollars an acre for unapproved raw land with no water or no utilities? Nothing.
That's how the appraisals have come out. So, yeah, it's very interesting.
No, I'm not suggesting us anything we're doing wrong. It just seems like.
Sometimes appraisals come back.
Extremely inflated.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll look for a motion on this item then.
I'm making a motion to approve Resolution Number R three zero dash two zero two five, approving the execution of an inter-local cooperation agreement with Salt Lake County providing for the transfer of fifty-seven thousand dollars of Salt Lake County Corridor Preservation Funds to be used to acquire certain property for transportation purposes.
Motion by Sheri.
I'll second.
Second by Tara. We'll go Tara?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, that motion carries. That brings us to the end of our general meeting tonight. We will move it into a closed meeting. Future meetings, though, Planning Commission on June fourth at seven o'clock. Next city council meeting will be June eleventh at seven o'clock. Events coming up, our rodeo kicks off tomorrow night through Saturday. We went out and met the Bowls today. Flapjack. Do yourself a favor and Google Flapjack.
He's a cute guy.
The Bowl. He is a legit Bowl. It's going to be a fun, it's going to be a fun weekend out there. Food Truck Roundup still every Monday night out here in front of City Hall. Declaration of Candidacy period for four councils, for three council seats and the mayor are June second through June sixth for an election later this year.